We'll begin with Commissioner comments and you'd like to start, Linda?
I'm drawing a blank.
Okay, Jared?
I just wanted to call quick attention to a program the city does every year this time of year called City Snow Partners, which is essentially a volunteer service where you can get on the city website, fill out a quick form, and volunteer to shovel some snow in a member of our community who is unable for whatever reason to do so. So we had our first snow event and there were, I think most of us had two or three houses that we had to do. So there is definitely some people on the waiting list. So if that is something that you are able to do, it's pretty easy. I did two houses and it only took me about thirty or forty-five minutes and it helps out a member of the community. So you can find information about that on the city website. I think it's on the main slideshow there as a form that you can fill out to volunteer. So I'd encourage you to do so.
Yeah, I second that. It gives you a good excuse to buy a snow blower. That's what I did. I couldn't justify it otherwise, but I went out and got one, so that makes it less than twenty minutes. I can knock it out. The other comment I'd like to make is the, you know, Animal Shelter had an event the past three, four days to adopt pets and they got a lot of them out of there. We still have a bunch there. So if you need a pet for Christmas, the Animal Shelter has a few dogs and cats, there's even a rabbit down there and two parakeets. So plenty of animals. Stop by there and adopt one for the holidays.
Linda?
Ron, fear, I wondered if you could give us just a brief update with regard to the Labor Day flood and if there, what any developments are?
Sure. There's a couple of consent agenda items relative to as a result of the flood. The first one would be item M, which is the Wildcat Creek 2D flood model. This is a request to seek qualification for professional services to develop a very dynamic 2D model which would be able to be utilized by both the city and the county to show the effect of proposed either development or could even measure the impact of improving a farmer's pond for increased detention and the effect that that would have on the watershed. So we think it's a, would be a strong help for us to do some predictive modeling for emergency evacuation, other types of components for whether a mitigation measure would be effective or not. And so that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar estimated total cost for that. And Riley County has already approved this and agreed to split that cost in fifty-fifty for a total of sixty-two thousand five hundred. So that would be an item that we would need a commissioner to serve on that. And I believe we talked at briefing, Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Butler have agreed to serve on that committee. The other item relative to that is we have received a hazard mitigation grant from the State Department of Emergency Management. This is a project that's estimated to be about a million, just over a million dollars total. The grant would be for approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. It's a seventy-five-twenty-five grant, and so the local match would be just over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. That's been budgeted in our stormwater fund, and this was something we had in the CIP, and it would propose to purchase the properties at 157 Bethany Drive, 700 Fairman Drive, and 945 Village Drive. Again, those are owners that voluntarily agreed to participate in this program, and so this would start that process to do that. We also have additional grant application in for further hazard mitigation grants for additional property acquisition. And hopefully we'll be successful in that. Again, Catholic Charities has hired a staff person to help with assistance, and we have the flood grant website for folks. We're aware that there's still quite a bit of work going on, especially in the Garden Way area, for repairs from the flood, especially with one of the senior apartment units with repairs to their elevator, which is causing some of their folks who need that elevator to be, continue to be displaced and are in other locations in the community and in other communities. So it's something we continue to monitor. And the commission did ask that maybe we can get that person to give us an update next month. So we'll work for that.
Just one additional thing. I'd like to just express the thankfulness, I guess, of citizens in the Northview area of the Berry Streets where even though you might think it's too cold, it's not that cold. We, you are able to lay pavement and put blankets on it, something I hadn't really ever thought about. But I know that those residents in that Knox Berry, or the Berry Streets, as you call them, are going to be really appreciative of having their streets tended to. So I'm excited every day that there's work going on down there. And there's no, there are no other jobs, so they're really hitting it hard. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we don't have meetings for the next three Tuesdays. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, safe travels, and hopefully everybody enjoys the activities we have going on in Manhattan as well as in the surrounding region. If you're visiting family or relatives outside of Manhattan, return back safely and hopefully we all have a great three weeks off from Tuesday meetings. So, thank you.
Yeah, we'd talked to Ron earlier, maybe just a word on that. We do have five Tuesdays in each one of the months, so we're not going to miss our four per month. I'm going to make sure you're aware of that. And on, on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, the city offices will be closed, and then they'll be closed again on New Year's Day. So other than that, they'll be at operation. And everybody ought to be assured too that all of those folks that are on 24-hour ops or standby, fire, police, public works that do our snow removal and things like that, although they're praying for no business, they'll certainly be, be ready. We've had a lot of great activities over the past two or three weeks, all demonstrating the benefits that come from a city like Manhattan and the way of giving. We had a function done at Bread Basket on Monday, yesterday, and gave away, I don't remember how many food baskets, but it was, it was heartening to see everybody down there pitching in to put together the food, to know that people had donated that food as well as funds so food could be purchased for giving away. And I think we finished up about a quarter to three and hopefully took care of as many people as we possibly could. And then you may have seen in the paper that the police department had gathered funds in order to make Christmas for kids who wouldn't ordinarily have much for Christmas, and took them down to the store and led them through each one of the aisles down there and maybe gave them a little bit of guidance on the toys they might pick out. So, and the great cooperation from our police department. The consent agenda, and again, these consent agenda items are those of a routine nature or ones that the commission has considered before. The item that Ron mentioned before was to pick commissioners to sit on this board, and as he described, we're going to have Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Morris sit on that floor. So that'll be included as part of it. So I'm going to ask the commission if there are any comments or movement of any of these items.
I just want to comment on item S. And I'm happy to see that, you know, the law board appointments this year are going to include the two citizens that I've always felt should have been included in the law board, which was the original intent of the ordinance. I don't think the city's done that for over ten years. So I'm happy to see that we're going to have the citizens there, and I encourage the county to appoint the third citizen that is required by that ordinance, and then we'll have a true balance on the law board of commissioners, attorneys, and local citizens from the county and the city.
I'm pleased that we can, we are continuing to, we're buying three more of the flood, flooded homes. We bought out three with FEMA. We're not, we don't do it by ourselves. But we bought three last year and three the year before, and I don't know our history much before that. But that's nine, nine affected residences. And now we have another list to start our, working our way through. So I am pleased that we're making some progress and we're keeping it before us and just giving it attention every month.
Are there any public comments to be made on any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Gary, will you call everyone?
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We'll now enter the general agenda. The first topic is to consider first reading of an ordinance rezoning eighteen-ten, eighteen-twelve, Todd Road from R3 Multiple Family Residential District to R3 UO Multiple Family Residential District with university overlay. And Chad Bunger will lead us in the presentation.
Provide the staff report overview for this item. We're generally located just to the west of Kansas State University and near Dennison Avenue more particularly. It's this site outlined here. Todd Road to the south, Dennison is a few feet to the east. And the request is to rezone the site to include the university overlay district so that the Luther House Campus Ministry can relocate their ministry to this site. It'll include their, their place of assembly for their campus ministry as well as a living quarters for some students. The university overlay is designed to, is intended for those kind of uses that you generally find around universities, but not necessarily part of the university. It is a all uses other than what's underlying. So anything other than what's allowed in the R3 district is a conditional use. So this is really step one of another couple of steps to establish this. The first is getting rezoned, and then they will go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask for conditional use approval. As you can see here, the site's already zoned, R3 Multiple Family Residential. To the east is another campus ministry. It's the Christ for Cat, or the Cats for Christ, excuse me. And then to the south, you have a variety of sororities, Greek Living, and then some apartments and whatnot. The findings are in the staff report, and the planning board heard this item two weeks ago and recommended approval based on the staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. City Commission, or excuse me, city administration is recommending approval for the proposed rezoning, and happy to answer your questions.
I may have missed it, Chad, but the ministry is currently located at Anderson and Dennison.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And that's being moved partially as a result of the initiative to, for the KSU Foundation to put in some condos in there.
That's my understanding, yes.
And then if you'll point out, just to the right-hand side of this slide is the KSU Gardens, just as a point of reference.
Yep.
So any commission comments, please? All right, well, we're all open for public comments. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Emily Koenig. I'm the architect that's working with the Luther Campus Ministry on this project, and I just wanted...
I'm sorry. I should have said this in the beginning. If you'll say your, your name and then your address, and then we'll have you sign in before you leave. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm Emily Koenig. My address is sixty-five fifty Harbor Haven Drive. I'm the architect working with Luther and Campus Ministry and wanted to make sure that there weren't any additional specific questions that you had in regard to this particular project.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, the staff did a great job in laying this out for us, so I think we're, we're fine.
They sure did. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, please? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period. Entertain a motion if there are no further comments.
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning eighteen-ten and eighteen-twelve Todd Road from R3 Multi-Family Resident Residential District to R3 UO Multiple Family Residential with university overlay district based on the findings in the staff report and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Well, Clerk Colerole?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Second item on our agenda is the Chamber of Commerce year-end reports, and we've got several presenters. Jason, are you going to introduce or just Lyle and Karen? Okay.
You want me to introduce Jason?
Yeah.
Mayor Commissioners, Lyle Butler, President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. This is my eighteenth year and final year that I'll be coming before you as the President and CEO of the chamber, working on our contracts for services that we provide you, the commission. We take our work that we do for you very, very seriously. We appreciate your feedback. We appreciate your comments. We appreciate your suggestions. And we appreciate working with all of you along with your city staff. As our tradition is, Mayor, unless you feel differently, we're going to start out with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, have them make their presentation, and then we'll pause and allow the commission to make any questions or comments that they would like to make. And then when that's completed, we'll get up and talk about the economic development efforts and military relations, and again, pause at the end of that for any comments, questions, or suggestions if that's, works good for you and the, and the city commission. I think the, the good news for the community, the chamber, and, and you as city commissioners and staff is I'm very, very fortunate to have a very seasoned staff who's been with me for a number of years, and I believe, at least in my opinion, performs their job admirably and always has the best interest of the city in mind when they do their job as it relates to the services that we provide for the city. Our first presentation will be Karen Hibbard, who's been with the Manhattan Chamber twenty-two years and has a lot of experience in the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so it's that kind of experience that helps to, in my opinion, make us one of the best organizations, not only in the state of Kansas, but in this region of the country. So I'm going to let Karen come up, and she's going to be introducing a person that's going to help deliver here from our steering committee, and we'll get into some discussion. So Karen?
It is with pleasure that we get to present to you our fourth quarter presentation. Actually, when we do our first quarter presentation, we'll be able to give you complete information on how the entire year of 2018 has bared out. It's always a pleasure to be able to speak before you, and we couldn't exist without our leadership of our co-chairmen, Neil Farmer and Ben Segal. Neil's unable to be with us this evening. Am I not on?
I'm not.
This one is. Good. Ben, Neil Farmer is not able to be with us this evening, so Ben has graciously said that he'd be delighted to help deliver the good word as to how our fourth quarter presentation has gone. Ben will be our, our first co-chair next year. We have two co-chairs, so Ben, we trust that you're ready for a great 2019.
Always. The mission statement of the Manhattan Convention and Visitors Bureau is expanding the local area economy by attracting visitors. I think we know you guys know that, and we can, will continue to do that. The fourth quarter is the heart of the conference season as well as football fever. If you guys didn't know, we did get a new football coach. Are you guys all aware? Okay. So we're excited about that for next year as well. October 21st to 27th was the best week of the fourth quarter with a seventy-five, seventy-five-point-nine percent occupancy during this week. Visit Manhattan worked directly with six conferences. The best Friday was November 9th with a ninety-six-point-one occupancy, the Friday prior to the KU football game. The best occupants, the best Saturday was October 6th with an eighty-nine-point-nine percent occupancy. Football rains as this Saturday was the KSU versus Baylor game. Conferences make a big difference for Manhattan. During the fourth quarter, Visit Manhattan worked directly with twenty-four meetings, welcomed four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-five attendees, yielding thirty-one-hundred room nights sold, which generated an estimated economic impact of two-point-three million dollars. Just to remind you guys, the estimated economic impact is based on our research of the average visitor spend being three-hundred-and-eleven dollars per day.
So due to the timing of our presentation, we're going to show you something that is a tool that we'll be using next year. Our sales team is here, and they need a tool to entice our meeting planners to consider Manhattan. So I want you to keep in mind, this will eventually be thirty seconds long. It will also have some tweaking, so this is a rough cut, but sit back and enjoy our meetings video that will be used. in mind there is tweaking that needs to be done. It's still a little over thirty, thirty seconds. There's also some information that we need to tweak a little bit because we have concentrated on the conference center, but we also really want our meeting planners to understand that there are meeting opportunities across the community of Manhattan.
Onto sports. During the fourth quarter, Manhattan slows a bit with amateur sports events. These events included biking and marathons. These five sporting events welcomed over fourteen-hundred participants, one-hundred-and-twenty-two room nights, generating an estimated economic impact of just over eighty-three thousand dollars. On average, sports, a participant spent three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars a day. The Smith Travel Research Report provides information on the performance of our lodging. The most current information available to us reflects lodging performance through the month of October. The occupancy was sixty-five percent, up four percent from last year. You'll notice the ADR, average daily rate, was a hundred dollars and thirty-eight cents. That was up by three dollars and fourteen cents from a year ago. And the rev par, the revenue per room was sixty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, which was up five dollars and ninety-three cents from 2017. Supply, however, was down by twenty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-four, as well as demand was down by thirteen-hundred-and-sixty-eight from a year ago. Revenues were up by six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. Total room inventory reflects eighty-nine rooms less than in 2017. This chart reflects the monthly occupancy for the past five years. The most current data is through the month of October. 2018 continues to have a slightly higher occupancy than in years past. November and December data will be made available to us in the first quarter of 2019. Manhattan is fortunate to have had the opportunity to improve our occupancy this year as well. Our Visit Manhattan website is a window for potential visitors to see what's happening in Manhattan. This year, we saw a consistent trend in both webpage visits and page views on our Visit Manhattan website. In the fourth quarter thus far, we have accumulated twenty percent of our total year-to-date webpage visits at just over fifteen-thousand, and nineteen percent of our year-to-date page views at thirty-four thousand five hundred. Fifty-three-point-five percent of our year-to-date web, website visits came from a mobile device. Onto social media. Visit Manhattan has seen a steady increase of followers with a three percent gain on both Facebook and Twitter during the fourth quarter. Instagram continues to grow in popularity. The platform is still fairly new in terms of the data we have available to us. However, we did see a ten percent increase in followers from the third quarter to the fourth quarter alone. Good news, we still have another month of data to collect. Growth in followers signifies an increase in engagements or interactions with our target audience of potential visitors, which then allows us to increase our potential reach where we maximize our impressions. Have you checked you guys' Facebook today? Visit Manhattan has experienced a steady increase in Facebook pages, likes since the fourth quarter of 2017. This chart compares fourth quarter Facebook page likes for the last three years. We have a three-point-six-four percent increase in page, page likes since beginning of fourth quarter 2018. With a month left to collect data, we anticipate 2018 fourth quarter page likes to far surpass the previous years. Currently, sixty-five percent of our Facebook following is non-local, outside of Manhattan, Womago, Junction City, Fort Riley, and Ogden. Our large non-local following allows us to attract potential visitors through our, through their re-engagements with us. With our local following simultaneously promotes our mission to their non-local connections. We have followers as far as Zimbabwe. Impressions are the number of times your content is displayed, no matter if it was clicked or not. This quarter, on average, Visit Manhattan has seen over five thousand impressions per day. If we continue this trend, we predict that by the end of the year, our Facebook page will have roughly four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight total impressions. Facebook posts in the fourth quarter centered around the Festival of Lights, attracting a lot of attention, both local and non-local. Our most popular post centered around this yearly event that reached twenty-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five people and earned seven-hundred-and-forty reactions, comments, and shares. Crowd estimates for the Festival of, Festival Lights Tree Lighting Ceremony were nearly ten thousand people. Other popular posts included a video centered around the mayor's spirit of the Holidays Lighted Parade and Tree Lighting Ceremony, which reached thirty-four-hundred people and liked, commented on, or shared seventy-one times. Our top shared post was that of the K-State Power Cat etched into the snow at the Bill Snyder Family Stadium, which reached twenty-four-hundred people and earned a hundred-and-seventy-five likes, comments, and shares. Consumers tend to navigate toward their preferred means of social media. We keep a close watch on our social media data and have noticed a steep increase in impressions from October to November this fourth quarter, from just over thirty-three thousand to fifty-thousand. Our top tweet in November highlighted the Festival of Lights celebration with seven retweets and twenty-two likes. Visit Manhattan's Twitter page saw a twenty-five percent increase in Twitter followers since the beginning of the fourth quarter. Our social media specialist, Maggie Denon, has been especially focused on growing our Instagram following. Instagram is becoming increasingly popular, and is a fantastic means for marketing to younger generations. In addition, is a great way to share creative photos and network with like-minded individuals. As a result, we have seen a forty-three percent increase in followers on the Visit Manhattan's Instagram. Johnny's Facebook reach is about as big as his statue is tall. Our Facebook post about Johnny's K-State hat and accessory he donned at the beginning of the fourth quarter reached... of the fourth quarter reached 6,879 people, and was liked, shared, and commented on 320 times. The effort to create an interest in Johnny has been a success. Johnny caught bobbleheads, Facebook posts, and social media buzz have been all well-received. We look forward to hosting 2019 National Tourism Week in conjunction with the completion of the new plaza for Johnny. Community support for this project has been outstanding. Johnny caught bobbleheads are on sale at the Flint Hills Discovery Center and Sunset Zoo for $15, with all proceeds going towards the plaza project. Christmas is coming. Bobbleheads are the perfect Christmas stocking sufferer.
So, it's just like Christmas. We're giving you a little bit of a sneak peek. Again, we have another video that we want to share with you that we'll be using for a social media campaign next year. We all have a famous guy besides Johnny. It's Willie, the Wildcat, and we think you'll enjoy seeing this. Again, it's rough cut. There will still be some tweaks that will be made before we actually use this. It showcases Willie doing what people do when they come to Manhattan. They shop, dine, eat, and get to be adventuresome.
I'm really excited to share with you this page. It's a great honor that our Visit Manhattan team was recognized by the Kansas tourism industry for a job well done. During the Kansas Tourism Conference held in October in Junction City, Visit Manhattan received two first-place awards for our Visitors Guide, as well as our print publications, marketing efforts, which were deemed the best in the state. We appreciate Mayor Morse for being part of the annual banquet and awards ceremony. Our Think Social campaign, which we partnered with K-State Sports, ran from mid-October to early December. K-State sports fans, all of which live at least 120 miles outside of Manhattan, were invited through social media to take our "What Kind of Fan Are You?" quiz. Our partnership also featured a week-long digital game that we geo-fenced outside of our area to target visitors, enticed them with various prizes from local merchants. The digital game offered prizes, including a complimentary hotel night stay at the Blument Hotel, $15 gift certificates to Bourbon and Baker, as well as Tallgrass Tap House, adult admission to the Flint Hills Discovery Center, movie passes to AMC Theater inside Manhattan Town Center, and $15 mall gift certificates redeemable at the Manhattan Town Center. Highlights of the fourth quarter included celebration at the Festival of Lights tree lighting ceremony. Manhattan was fortunate to host the Kansas Water Conference, Kansas Farm Bureau's 100th Annual Meeting, and the inaugural Little Apple Marathon.
So, soon you're going to be seeing the 2019 Visitors Guide. The stakes are high, as we now, as Ben has said, received the acclamation that we had the best Visitors Guide in 2018 in the state of Kansas, so the pressure's on for us to repeat that in 2019. The new guide, this is the cover of the new guide. Again, some of the features that are a bit different is we have three profiles showcasing three of Manhattan's businessmen and women that make Manhattan unique, calling those out as people come to visit and explore Manhattan. And then, last but not least, we want to share with you this video, because social media content is where we have gotten the most, those have been our most popular ways to reach people throughout 2018. Our holiday video highlights two of Manhattan's largest seasonal events, the Festival of Lights and the Little Apple New Year's Eve Celebration. This 30-second spot was designed to be used in several outlets, on our website, social media platforms, as well as television and radio commercials. This ad ran, is running on KSNT, KTKA, KTMJ, and Cox Cable, radio stations Eagle Radio, KQLA, KJCK, and Alpha Media stations 94.5, 98.5, 106.9, 580, B104, and K-Man. This ad campaign is a perfect way to get you excited for the holiday season, as well as encourage visitors to explore Manhattan's magic.
... How better to celebrate? The holidays are special in Manhattan. From the Festival of Lights in Blue Earth Plaza, to the Little Apple New Year's Eve Celebration in Aggieville. Carriage rides and events are happening across the entire community all month long. Like the Little Apple New Year's Eve ball drop in Aggieville. Make your family memories in Manhattan. Find out more about Manhattan's holiday events at visitmanhattanks.org.
We're ready to ring in 2019. Who has the first question for us?
I attended the Festival of Lights, the kickoff, and I really enjoyed it. I was thinking that the last time we had such a big crowd there was the night before a ballgame. And I thought, oh, there aren't going to be as many people here. And I was just amazed. They were there.
Yes.
Do you have an estimate on the number of people?
We had about, the best estimate that we have been given is about 10,000 people. I can share with you that we've had feedback with several stories of people that have now made Manhattan and the lighting of the tree an annual event for them, that don't live in Manhattan. Obviously, it's a place where a lot of locals come, but I know of folks that have come from Indiana, Nebraska, Texas, that are coming in specifically for that. Some of them have been residents. The ones in Nebraska had been residents here, but it was such a part of their family tradition that they wanted that to continue. So, if we took the time to survey those folks as they were celebrating, I'm sure that we would have countless stories that we could share. But Manhattan and Whoville, Whoville really is the one that much is given to for that belief in making that happen, but it's a great addition to Manhattan in the holiday season.
I stood by a grandmother from Blue Rapids that brought her grandchildren, and they were just so excited. And the little story with the Grinch was just, really captured their imagination.
Yes.
I'll think of another question.
I just had a couple of quick questions. First, great job, as always. I always enjoy these reports. They deem a lot of information for us. The only thing I'd be curious about, and I think I've asked you this before, is from your social media followings and analytics from your website, have you been able to draw any geographical conclusions? Like, you said 65, 75% of those people are outside the area.
Yes.
Are they concentrated in one particular area of the country?
They're really all over, and Michael is here. I don't know if he can be a little bit more specific with me on that. We were looking at that, and as we're seeing that growth and really being able to concentrate on that data, Commissioner, what we are finding is, when we first looked at that, many of our consumers of our social media were locals, and we still have a lot of local followings. But that's not who we want to tell the story to. That's not what we're charged with. We're charged with attracting those folks outside in. Hence, the reason that we partner with Learfield Sports, because those are folks that already have an interest in Manhattan and Kansas State, but showing them what else there is to do. That's why you saw that little campaign that's going to be with Willie, envisioning what else you can do when you donned your purple. So, really, we did a heat map with where our inquiries were coming. Due to time, we didn't put that in, but that heat map was very interesting, very heavy in Texas and on the east coast, but more so what we are also seeing is there's a growth to the west coast as well, a lot in the Seattle area. So, I don't know, I've not dug into that enough to know if some of that is because of Fort Riley, and as people scatter across due to their military service, if that's because of Kansas State. We need to delve a little bit further in order to answer that.
I would love, personally love, to see that in the future.
Okay.
I think not only does it help you drive marketing decisions on the CBB side, but I think it could, I don't want to say largely, impact some of the decisions we make, but if you took a survey of where I thought most of our outside likes were coming from, I probably would have guessed a city like Dallas.
Right.
Seattle would never have been on my top 10 list, and I think that's important information. The only other thing that I would like to see next time too, on your website traffic, I would just be curious to know, of the 200 or so thousand visits you got, how much of that is just normal internal traffic from the CBB itself, and how much of it is like true, unique visits from elsewhere? And it should be relatively easy to find that out, and maybe delve some demographic information from that too.
Sure. We're happy to gather that information for you when we give our first quarter report, as well as wrap up the 2018 year, so we've made note of that.
Otherwise, it was all good, and I appreciate you gathering all of that.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Again, as was prefaced before, good stuff. Three videos in concise manner. I was looking at the hotels, the occupancy. You have, the inventory is less than in the past five years, it's a 1,237, but our revenue has been increasing, has increased, even, I think because the daily average is about $100 now, so that also has not stopped people from visiting and staying in Manhattan. But the Marriott is not up yet. How many more rooms would that add? I think you said this was down like 89? Are we expecting 100?
115.
127? So, that would go back up again. So, that's going to increase once that's added in. So, I'm happy to see those numbers, because you always wonder what's going to happen if the traffic is going to slow down, but it hasn't. We have two rec centers being built at the, two middle schools, so hopefully, in the next two or three years, those will also be part of your meeting spaces that you promote in your videos, whether it's meeting spaces, gymnastics, it doesn't necessarily have to be competitive play, but they're large spaces that can accommodate other things, as opposed to along with our hotel space and meeting rooms. Different people need different needs. I think one of the things you had in the Hilton Garden Inn was that wheat, as if the wheat, that conference that comes and has the bread baking.
The National Festival of Bread.
Yeah. Something like that can also be held in gyms, so hopefully, we can start promoting that in the next couple of years. On your Facebook, you know, you mentioned it attracts Ogden, Waumee Go, and all of those areas, and Commissioner McKee has alluded to the region, how it's impacting the region. So, even though out-of-staters might come, but I think people that stay, do like a staycation, a lot of them are planning their trips around the Festival of Lights, and that is something they're looking forward to, and that takes a lot of volunteer committees and efforts. So, even though CBB and tourism and everything work together, that's a whole lot of people that are volunteering their hours to put it together and fundraising, to make sure we are constantly going, going, going. And we have the, is it the tallest pixelated tree, I think is what Belinda Snyder said last time she was here.
Correct.
So, things like that. We have people generating ideas, and I think that's what makes it for a great community. So, I'm glad we're still moving forward with all of these initiatives, and the numbers are still going up, and this is one of the areas that Manhattan is doing really well on. So, thank you for the report, and hopefully, we can incorporate the other two gyms that are going to come onboard.
Absolutely.
Just one quick thing. You know, when, if you saw in that one chart, we were kind of stalled at around 60, 61% occupancy for a long time, and trying to figure out how to fill up those rooms. So, now that we've moved from 61 to 65, it's important to try to figure out why. Whether it's a combination, or that there's one or two things that are more important than the others, then you can press on those one or two things and continue to make progress. It's just part of the analysis that you need to keep doing to move ahead.
Absolutely. And I think it's important for us to keep in mind that some of those, as conferences ebb and flow, we'll have some conferences that won't meet here next year. We'll have some conferences that they're one and done, but it's important for us to continue to be looking, what is that other, an additional conference that can come into town that might only meet here once, but make a big impact for us when they are here? So, yes. We appreciate having the opportunity to promote Manhattan. It takes a team to make it, and we have an excellent team in which to do that, so thank you for your votes of confidence.
I think, Lyle, you suggested that we have a public comment after this, and then have the rest, so let me ask if there's any public comment on the CBB portion of this presentation, and then we'll move to the second half, if there are no comments. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Well, I'm very, as you can see, very proud of what the Convention and Visitors Bureau has accomplished and the improvements we've made, and as some of you know and have been part of, we've had consultants in to challenge us to make sure we're moving in the right direction, and I think, Mayor, part of the reason why I think we're up is we have implemented what experts have told us that we needed to do, and Karen and her team, and her team is here. Marcia's here, Tony's here, Michael's here. TV audience can't see them, but they are here, and they have a tremendous amount of expertise also that adds, and we also have another person that, a couple of other people that aren't here, that support the efforts of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'd like to say, as we switch gears and move into economic development, there's going to be four presenters, myself, that'll be followed by John Pagan, who's our community development person at the Chamber, and then Janet Nichols, who's our military liaison, and then Trent Armbrust will be our cleanup person to kind of bring it all together for our economic development. And if I combine those three individuals, that's another almost 26 years of experience that's coming forward. So, I'm, again, very, very proud of the team and the experience that they bring to this community and to the city commission. My comments are really brief. I've talked about this before, and I continue to mention it, and I think that it's important for the citizens at home to be reminded, and those that follow our economic development efforts, and it has been a high priority of mine, that economic development funding primarily comes from the private sector, and that is something that I believed in when I first came here, and actually, when I arrived 18 years ago, other than a little money from the city and the county, there wasn't much of a budget for economic development. And the private sector, I'm very, very proud of, have stepped to the plate, and over four Advantage Manhattan campaigns have raised millions and millions and millions of dollars to help staff and market the greater Manhattan area, and I think overall, although we're having a pause last year, I think that as we look to the future, I personally believe Manhattan's economic future is very bright, and there's a lot of opportunities. But this slide talks about that over 70% comes from private sources, and our current Manhattan, or Advantage Manhattan campaign, which is called Power Our Potential, has 140 investors, and it has almost $3.4 million over a five-year period that is raised to help market Manhattan and drive economic development. This is another way to look at the chart that goes back to 1998, when we first started doing economic development efforts, and the darker purple line shows the private sector funding, as it has continued to increase over the 18 years since I've been here. And I salute the Chamber Board of Directors, the Chamber leadership, and the many, many businesses that have contributed this kind of money to make economic development work. And again, I think it's an important reminder to be able to see this at this level.
Lyle, would you point out for the people at home, that light purple line is the city funding, and how flat, I mean, you can describe it better.
And this little tiny blip here had to do, and you all joined us and matched dollars, $40,000 for supporting the start of our military relations program. The Chamber did not have one prior to that, but this was the ability to hire a full-time staff person, and now Janet has taken that program and done a great job. Thank you, Commissioner.
And that's the difference, though, that the dark line is the private funding.
Right.
And that dim line is our city funding that has been relatively flat.
That is correct.
Because I'm not sure you can, how well it...
Maybe clear at home.
Yeah. Thank you.
You can also see when I came in 2001 from the private sector, it wasn't very much money. So, it very quickly raised up in our 2001 first Advantage Manhattan campaign, and then it clicked up again, then again, and then here we are over here. We're two years, as of the end of December, at the end of this month, we're two years into our five-year campaign, and there'll be three more years of... And there'll be three more years of economic development funding. And now I'm going to turn it over to John Pagan, who's got a few slides. And we'll continue to move through our presentation and then we'll stand for questions at the end.
Thank you very much, Lyle. A pleasure to be with you this evening to talk about some workforce issues. It's no mystery that workforce is our constraint right now to our growing economy. This quick slide, just going back as far as I could go to 1993, though, shows sales activity. The far-right slide, the far-right column still has one month to go. But essentially, we're about a $1.1 billion gross sales town for the last couple of years. So, very impressive for a town of, you know, 57-ish thousand people. It's really quite a phenomenal number. I've shown this slide many times. The quickest way is just to go across the Manhattan boxed row. Our first Advantage Manhattan campaign started in January of 2002. So, that's kind of when the clock started ticking. We had 22,320-ish people employed. The next column over is October of 2018, which is the most recent number from the Kansas Department of Labor. We're up to over 29,800 and some people employed. That's a net gain of 7,540. That's a percentage gain of 34%. What you see there are 16 cities that the Department of Labor ranks going back to 2002. We're number seven from the second to the right in terms of the net number. But we're number two in terms of that 34%, how big the pie has grown. And I think that's very significant. And if you look at that rightmost column, as it so happens, number one is right below us, which is Alatha. Number three is right below that, which is Overland Park. Number five is Shawnee below there. Number four right above us is Lenexa. And then number six is Leewood. And then number seven is Garden City. But five of the top six, with us as the outlier, are in that Kansas City metro area. They just simply have a larger group of people and a larger labor basin from which to draw than we do. So, I really think this is still phenomenal that we've grown that much, given that we're out of that Kansas City metro. We're literally the second fastest-growing since the first Advantage Manhattan campaign. This slide is another Department of Labor slide. In fact, they just spoke at a workforce event yesterday and said their methodology involves, actually, the paperwork employers turn in when they hire a new person, phone calls, et cetera. This goes back to 1990 and this is each month. So, this is over 300 data points on this chart. And what this shows is that we started out with under 20,000 employed people on the far left in 1990. You see it kind of stair-step up. It's had zigs and zags. We're now just under 30,000 people employed as of October 2018. So, I kind of like this chart because this is really exhaustive from Department of Labor data in Kansas. And so, this is apples to apples with all the other communities that they monitor. Again, workforce is our big project and our big constraint in town. We have several initiatives. I want to go over them real quickly with you. One is Career Exploration Days, which is where this year, junior high school students on one of their foreign service days, they spent, one group spent a day at Mercy Regional. And the other went to Civic Plus and Olson, which is in the same building. So, parents picked up and dropped off. We did not utilize school bus transportation this year. And we think it worked out pretty well. The kids really enjoyed seeing the businesses in town. And naturally, like most kids, they're kind of in a bubble. They don't know what's going on in the town. So, it was great for them to see all the things going on. We also did a classroom-to-career partnership. This is the second year we've done it. The picture on the right is Jim Janett with the Technical College and the fourth grade class that they adopted. And this was all 22 fourth grade classes in USD 383, all six in Womego. We also did, Flint Hills Christian School had its own sponsor, Manhattan Catholic School did, as well as Westmoreland. So, we're really trying to get a regional thing where kids can see in the fourth grade businesses in the region and how vibrant the economy is. And of course, most of what they do with fourth graders are fun things. But it's great to, the kids and the teachers really appreciate the fact that the business community is reaching out to them and cares about them. And we think they ought to really pay dividends in the future when they get older. There's nothing like good timing. And the picture on the top right was at Meadowlark Hills during the Classroom-to-Career event. And that got on the cover of the Kansas School Board Review, which was great, great press for us for this initiative. We also participated, the chamber did, in a USD 383 meet and greet. Teachers from the high school went to the MATC campus and got to meet some of the staff. Here's some of the Critical Environment Technology staff. We figured they're going to be some of the best champions for the Technical College, for students at USD 383, when they're choosing their next career step. We also did a mailer. I worked with the Alumni Association and was able to find K-State alums who are in certain medical degree majors, who no longer live in the tri-county region. And we were trying to entice them to come back. So, this was like an oversized postcard. It just went in their mailbox. There was nothing even to tear open. It was minimal effort, hopefully, to jog their memory, to go to the Return to the Flint Hills website and see that all that Manhattan has to offer and that their expertise would very much be valued here. This is a slide that Kristi Rodriguez, who's our Program Director of Region Reimagined, put together. And she talks about, in the middle, you see some of the successes. Everything from Communities to Call Home, which I'll cover on the next slide, the classroom partnerships, the career exploration partnerships, and Return to the Flint Hills. So, I feel very gratified that a lot of the stuff the chamber is doing, for lack of a better word, is kind of the tip of the spear towards this initiative to work regionally and market us as a region with Region Reimagined. And here is Flint Hills Communities to Call Home. This was really set up by the Flint Hills Regional Council. They got a $10,000 grant from the Minnesota Housing Authority. So, we're able to leverage money. 26 communities in the region are doing this. And you can see on the slide, Alta Vista is one of them, some very small communities up to Manhattan. Each community gets one page, three photos, but then they can link to their restaurants, their places of worship if they want to, their retail, et cetera. And this is, one thing we were thinking about long-term was for people coming for NBAF and other things, that there's other options to live in the region besides Manhattan. If they don't want to live in a city, if they want a house in the country or a much smaller town for whatever reason. So, this is an initiative that will keep going. Each community pays a small fee to maintain the website and annually, we can do updates to it. So, we got fantastic participation. And being the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, it was very gratifying to reach out to some of these smaller communities and help them with their, with marketing their community. And Return to the Flint Hills continues to be very successful. We are modifying it for other communities in the region if they want to use it. We're in the back, inside-back cover of every K-Stateer every quarter. We get really good feedback on this campaign and we just keep tweaking with it. And it's on the Mercury website during football and basketball season, so we've had very good exposure. Some accolades, I love the accolades. I think I've told you before, our Market Street Services guys said we're literally one of two or three most-accolated cities in the United States when you tally it all up. We were the number-two best place to live of any place in the U.S. this year from livability.com. Number-three Town Gun Relations with Princeton Review. We were number-one last year. So, just to be in that top cluster is fantastic. Top 10 best city for military veterans and that's a lot due to Janet's good work. Another one from Wall Street, 24/7, one of the 10 most-well-read cities in America due to our libraries, being a college town, being high-educated, so very good accolades. One other thing I wanted to touch on, we also had a Soldier for Life Initiative where Dr. Shale Grace at K-State, we brought some active duty, but soon to transition out of the military soldiers to the K-State campus. And they got to tour Civic Plus, they got to tour Florence Manufacturing. So, we're going to be doing more of all this web of the schools, Fort Riley Technical College, et cetera, to increase our talent pipeline. And with that, I will turn it over to Janet.
Hi there. I figured I'd start with some ongoing initiatives that I've been working on. I'm going to start off with the Advised Program. I ended up, by the time it was ready to go, it was the fall. And I get a little busy in the fall with some events we have annually, which I will get to. So, but I spoke to Kristi Rodriguez, the Region Reimagined Coordinator. And it really fits in well with the talent acquisition and one of the nine priorities there. So, we are going to, I'm going to work with Kristi and the Talent Acquisition Program there. And I am going to launch it in February at the MRC Lunch there. And just to remind you, it is a mentorship networking program. It provides opportunity for soldiers in the Transition Program on Fort Riley Soldier for Life Transition Assistance Program to partner with someone in the business community who is in a field that they are interested in to go to five-chamber events. They are paired with someone, their sponsor or advisor will pay for them to attend these events. And hopefully, they'll meet three people at each. And it's a good way to get the military community involved with the business and Manhattan community. And by aligning it with Region Reimagined, it can be spread out throughout the region really easily, which was my intent from the get-go, that, you know, I'd start it and shoot it out. The next thing that happened that I did start this year is the Kansas Military Alliance. And I'm really happy with how this went this year. We had three meetings. We would have had four, but the Kansas weather intervened early in the year. And we have four meetings scheduled next year. They move around all over the state. We have input from, all the way from McConnell to Johnson County. We have input not only from people in positions like mine through chambers of commerce. We also have the major universities in the state, their military relations divisions as well, KU, K-State, we have Washburn, and we have Johnson County Community College as well. Unbeknownst to me till very recently, the largest veteran population in the state is in Johnson County. I didn't know that. So, hence, and we also are very lucky. We have someone from the David Kemper Foundation for Veterans involved. And we also have, of course, I went to our Governor's Military Council Executive Director, Perry Wiggins. And he's been knee-deep in it as well. And I'm very excited. We have a proposed vision, mission, vision statement, mission statement, objectives. And also, objectives really fall in with our Region Reimagined Program as well. Especially, contribute to the enhancement conditions favorable for economic development initiatives with military and veteran-connected people, organizations, and communities. Contribute to the enhancement of the employability of military-connected talent in Kansas as an enabler for state citizenship, community development, and vibrancy. There's a lot more. I don't want to bore you guys. But honestly, it's very exciting what's going on, this meeting of the minds and what we can do, not just for our state, but for our community. So, I'm really proud of that. And so, now to the fun stuff. I love this picture. This is from the K-State Military Appreciation Day. We have Commanding General John Koloszewski on my left. And then on the far right, on the other side, is the Gerson Commander Steve Schrader. But in the middle, Specialist Zachary Cockrell. He was not only the Fort Riley Soldier of the Year, he was the 3 Corps, so at the next level, Soldier of the Year. And then he went and competed with all the other soldiers in the country. So, he was a great guy. It was a pleasure to meet him. I met him more than once. He's with the 97th MPs. And it was a really exciting, exciting day. I'm also going to talk about our MRC Lunches. They continue to be a really good pull both for the community and Fort Riley. We have at least 100 every month that moves around the community. We are not going to combine with Junction City this January. Just the timing with their new director didn't make it really feasible. However, we are going to meet up again and join forces for Victory Week. I've already spoken to Fort Riley about that. So, it's looking like June 12th, tentatively, that we'll do our combined large lunch. So, I'm excited about that. And I'm also extremely excited about our February, our first lunch of the year on February 6th. We are working with our AUSA Chapter. And that happened at Annual Meeting, which I'll show you a picture of in a second, AUSA Annual Meeting. Command Sergeant Major Tony Grinston, he is a former Command Sergeant Major of the 1st Infantry Division. He is currently the Command Sergeant Major of United States Forces Command. And he is coming back for our first lunch of the year. We are inviting AUSA membership. And also, we're inviting the membership of Junction City's Military Affairs Committee as well. We're thinking it'll be a really big event. And we're really excited to get included with our AUSA Chapter for that event. So, here is a picture from AUSA Annual Meeting. This was really exciting because General Millie, who is the Army Chief and who will be the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, soon came. He came with the, oh, now I can't remember his name, but he's the number-two person at the Department of the Army, Ryan Murphy, the Assistant Secretary of the Army, excuse me. And then also Senator Moran. And if you look all the way at the side, is Command Sergeant Major Grinston on my left. So, he'll be here in February. But he sang the, he sang the Big Red One song. He was very reassuring as to Fort Riley and the 1st Infantry Division. And it was really exciting to have him come to our event at the AUSA Annual Meeting. This was specifically for 1st ID-related people and alumni. With this in mind, I do want to give you a brief 1st Infantry Division update, operations update for next year. They're going to be busy next year. I'm sure you all have probably heard, three brigades are deploying in January. First Brigade and the Aviation Brigade are going to Poland. Except for one battalion of the Aviation Brigade is going to Afghanistan with the 1st Statement Brigade. Also, early in the year, there's an NTC rotation at the National Training Center in Fort Irwin, California in March. And they'll be training for that. Likewise, the Division Artillery Brigade is supporting a lot of these operations. So, the first quarter of the year will be very busy. It'll lighten up a while and, but it should be all wrapped up by October from what I understand. So, likewise, we do have a little less than 100 of the headquarters from 1st Infantry Division in Poland as well. And they're there, manning the headquarters there through, I think, March of 2020. So, but we still have our commanding general. For the first time in a while, he's not deploying anywhere. He'll be here his entire tenure. I'm sure he'll be busy flying around a lot next year. But I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that information. And then Veterans Day, I thought for sure after the 2017 Veterans Day that it would be warm. Surprise. Despite the cold weather and despite the kids riding in the buses instead of marching, we still had over 2,000 participants in our parade. We were on record, we were on board to break another participation record. We had over 3,000 participants signed up before the weather got cold. This continues to be a great, great event for our community, whether it's freezing cold or you're wearing T-shirts and shorts that day. And I'm really proud to be a part of this event and helping the planning. And then I just wanted to take a minute to say one more thing. If you were at last, the last MRC Lunch of the year, I asked everybody to sign cards for young Keely Majewski. She is the Command Sergeant Major of the Systemic Brigade's daughter. She's three. She was extremely ill. She was in the hospital for three weeks. She's home, she's doing much better. But those cards, she, her mother has thanked me profusely more than once. And that really is an epitome of what we do and what I do. In that, you know, she was floored that complete strangers would have such sentiments for her daughter. She said she read every single one to Keely. And she, she really is doing better. I think she'll be okay. She's home, she's here. But, but it really does give meaning to what our community does on a regular basis to make the military feel welcome. And that was a very small thing. It cost me less than $40 to buy some crayons and some coloring books and stickers and buy four cards and put them in an envelope and drop them off at their front door. So, it really doesn't take much to do something like that, but it really does make a big impact. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to do that. Because as a former military spouse, it really does make a difference. So, thank you all. And if you have any questions, feel free. Thanks. Okay, oh, so now I'd like to introduce Trent Armbrust.
Good evening, Commissioners. Trent Armbrust, Director of Economic Development. And I, this is a slide you've seen before with a few tweaks, but it really speaks to the importance of the partnerships that we do all of our activity through. So, we can't do anything in economic development without our partners. And they're across the state, they're local, they're regional, really are important. I'm not going to go over our activity with each one of these, just one. I'm not gonna go over our activity with each one of these, just want to point out a few. Where you see the Kansas Economic Development Alliance, KEDA, that's a group that we're involved with that is really starting to become more active. And when I say more active, KEDA represents the local economic developers from across the state of Kansas. And we have not had a voice, a strong voice in Topeka for a long time, both in the Governor's Office and the Legislature. And so we're, we're being very intentional this year, word last year, but intentional this year, to be more active with the Legislature, be more active in the Governor's Office with the Secretary of Commerce. And that's really critical, because the state of Kansas has not had a strategic plan for economic development for 30 years. And we are with Team Kansas and the KEDA, along with our Legislature, and we just met with the Transition Team for Governor-elect Kelly, going to lead that charge in 2019 to develop a new economic development strategy for the state of Kansas. And one of our goals locally is that we're gonna have a seat at that table, but we're also gonna be engaged the entire process, and that's gonna inform what we can do in Manhattan, or how, and how we can be more robust in Manhattan. Because the Kansas Department of Commerce and the image of the state of Kansas and the approach of the state of Kansas, whether it be workforce or asset development, impacts what we do in Manhattan on a daily basis. So very excited about that effort. We can go through a lot more of these. You see the metal logo up there? You know, that's Manhattan and Poria, Topeka and Lawrence, addressing together workforce issues, and how our region's institutions are helping with that. KBED, Knowledge-Based Economic Development. We have a large pipeline there. We have 13 active companies in that pipeline. Again, that, that's a critical partner as we move forward. Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership will be for, be in front of you in the coming months on a regular basis, and show you some of the tools that we've developed regionally through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. And then last, I just want to say real quick about Animal Health Corridor and Kansas City Area Development Council. Critical partners, we continue to build those relationships. They've helped one of our companies locally get integrated into the Kansas City market. And that's critical because of the, some of the partners that they have, some of the resources that are in Kansas City are helping our local companies grow. And so that's a partnership we want to continue to build on. And KCADC and the Animal Health Corridor, as we did the USDA submission this fall, we partnered with them as we worked through that process and did some of that together. So really critical to have those partners as we move forward. I'll update you on the Kansas Entrepreneurial Center. Again, this is a city-owned facility that is managed by the Chamber of Commerce. We have a lease agreement, a master lease agreement with the city, and then we sublease to different companies. We do pay full property tax at this property, since these are all for-profit entities that occupy it. Just to review them real quick, a long-term, it will work from the top down. Extratech has been a long-term tenant there. Extratech makes extrusion equipment that is used for pet food production and fish food production. It's actually an R&amp;D center for them. So they actually bring in clients there, develop new formulas of pet food. On the left-hand side, you see Advanta Seed. That's a new tenant this year. Advanta was a company that we spent 2 years recruiting to Manhattan, and they have a research center in Manhattan now, and they had, they headquarters out of the KEC. Neon in the middle, long, again, long-term tenant. They do field chemistry, so they work a lot out at Conza Prairie, partner with the Division of Biology at K-State. And they are now owned by Patel Corporation, so they've changed hands, but they continue to be a great tenant for us. In the blue trans desk, that was actually a student startup business. He's continued to grow that business, but due to family relations, is moving that business to Dallas in 2019. So those spaces, that'll become empty in, at the end of this year, but we do have 2 possible tenants that are looking at that space. So the KEC will stay 100% occupied in 2019. Medical Search Associates, long-term, locally-owned business that has been a great partner at the KEC. And then our newest tenant, Dibbo Labs. We spent 2018, we've spent over $120,000 renovating those laboratories to bring them up to standard. Dibbo Labs provides analytical services for food chemistry. So they go in, they work with food manufacturers, food processors, as well, human and pet food, and they provide the food microbiology as well, the food chemistry analysis. And they are going through the accreditation process right now, and then they will fully open up in, in early 2019. Manhattan Business Park, this continues. Kansas Gas Service is now open at the top, where you see it say "Option" on Lot 10. Again, this is a company that we have worked with for quite a while, that is continuing to move forward, and they are ready to exercise an option. So appreciate working with the city and legal on negotiating that option, and you should see that soon in front of you. The spot where it says "Proposal," right here, that's a company we've worked with now throughout the year, and we've had a little delay there, but it's a good delay because they've had new market opportunities in front of them. So we had a plan, had the civil, some of the civil work done, and then they said, "Let's put everything on hold for a minute. We still like that site, but we need to do some additional research due to some additional, some new opportunities." And then we've had the contract on the ground. And Ultra Electronics, their leadership from England has been in town in the last month, and so we continue to look forward to their expansion. Entrepreneurial ecosystem, critical. We've had a lot of conversation about this a few weeks ago in Aggieville, about the importance of that Innovation District concept and entrepreneurial activity, and how you need that density, you need the networking environment. And so our, our built environment as we go forward is gonna speak to this. Highlight a few on there, Mid-America Angels. Again, we have local investors that are part of that group out of Kansas City that are investing in startup companies. And so we have that active angel environment, angel investment environment here in Manhattan that we continue to build on. Talked a little bit about Kansas City Area Development Council from the perspective of the Animal Health Corridor, but they also have some activities around entrepreneurial, really startups in that ecosystem that we're gonna continue to work with them on, and I, I see some new things in 2019 that we'll work on, as well as we've participated in their animal investment forum that they hold every fall. And so you see what the new animal health companies are. They're coming out from really around the globe. 1 Million Cups in the center. 2018 was the first year for that. You've heard me talk about that before. We've had a huge success, between 70 and 90 people each meeting. And in our last meeting, where we celebrated our 1-year anniversary, we had 103 attendees. Truly a community grassroots effort that has reached a population that we had not reached before. And this is not just a chamber event, but, you know, the fellows involved and a variety of community people, and really have been proud of, of what that has done. You see the Entrepreneurial Community Partnership. Again, that's our Network Kansas. That's where YUC, Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge came out of. We're gonna do that again in 2019. But we also have the Revolving Loan Fund, have had some activity in that, and hopefully we have a loan coming forward in early 2019. And then Startup MHK, over 30 participants in that pitch event again this year. Last, I want to talk a little bit about future. This goes off a little bit here, but really looking at the future of incentives nationally, and it's gonna be a challenge for us here, and that's really the agile real estate concept. Had a Fortune 50 company. They want 30% of their employees to be in flexible coworking environments. Why? Because of the networking and the startup mentality that's in those spaces. So it, it really is a change in approach for companies and the way, where they want their talent to operate out of. Also, and I, I'll get to this in a minute, the flexible space environment is changing rapidly. So think about cowork space, but also different ways of leasing office space. And you can see there that flex space is gonna surpass legal government insurance sectors by mid-2019. This is a rapidly growing trend where the companies that we talk about attracting to Manhattan are gonna occupy flex space, and that's gonna impact us. I want to run through this real quick. Why is this all happening? If you look at the change, the pace that's happening, and the changes in technology, the regulatory environment, the economics, is then also cultural trends, that accelerating pace is driving businesses to look at how they do business differently. And so they've taken on this operational strategies. They want to reconfigure quickly. It's how fast you can readjust your business to react to these different inputs. And so businesses are looking at their structure, their processes, their people, their technology. It's evolving so quickly that they want to have very agile structure in these 4 elements. That's all driving real estate decisions. Traditionally, you look at building costs, you look at location, you look at the amenities around it. Now it's how flexible is that space so that they can reposition these elements of their business? That's changing the way they look at real estate. Some of the things that we see right now is you're leveraging cowork space. So instead of saying, "We need to build a new building because we're adding this new division," we're gonna go rent space in a cowork space for a while, see how it works out, flex, and then do something more permanent. The flexible leases, they don't want that long-term lease because they need to flex in size. Also, talent, on-demand hiring is a big, is really increasing now. You bring in people for a project, and then they're gone. And then you also have, you know, that stay-at-home, the freelance, contract employees. So the businesses, when they say we're gonna have 60 people, they may, those parts may change a lot. And so that's gonna challenge us as we work with our incentives, because companies are going away from owning their space to more rent, more leased space. They want that leased space to be highly flexible, and the number of employees that they have will constantly change. And so these trends will challenge us as we work with our incentives and we work with new companies coming forward. Last, I showed this before, it's a little broken up here for some reason. It's the 3 legs of the economic development stool now. Used to be we focused on retention, expansion, recruitment, startup, and we were focused on just the buildings, our assets, land, and jobs. Now we're really looking at that whole picture of talent development, you know, that quality of place, as well as the business development piece. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for John, Janet, Trent, Lyle?
A little bit for everybody except maybe Lyle. Lyle, you have an outstanding team.
Thank you.
Say that. There was a lot of information. So let me start with the, for John, you talked a lot about the economics in the region. How is the Flint Hills Regional Council? Are they incorporated in this also? Do you all do presentations to them, or?
Yeah, we have, we have regular communications with them, and like the Communities to Call Home Initiative, which is just a great idea. They, they drove that train. They, they championed that, and they've been really good to work with. And Christy with Region Reimagined has been working with them as well, and will continue to do so. Because we really want, truly, we do, and you know, we know that as, as the region is stronger, that only helps Manhattan and everybody, so we want to keep doing that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know where they fit into the picture. So my next question is for Janet. You mentioned the Kansas Military Alliance.
Mm-hmm.
And how it's switching. You're gonna have more meetings, you're gonna go to different areas in the state. You talked about leadership. Is there an advisory board to that, or a director or coordinator that's organizing that?
Well, that's been me.
Yeah. As, you're spearheading it, so I wasn't sure how that's looking.
Yeah, so, so it's getting formalized as we go along. So we started in Manhattan, and that was really just an introductory meeting. And then we went to Kansas, University of Kansas in Lawrence, and then we started focusing down on mission, objectives, goals, purpose, that sort of thing.
They're formalizing it a little bit.
Right. And so we, and we got much more concrete in Topeka earlier this month. So I think early next year, we'll have more, like exactly, like what kind of structure we want, and I think we're gonna get a subgroup together to do that, you know, like a policy and procedure. So basically, I started out with asking people who are in my position from across the state. I've gotten referrals, and then also with K-State and University of Kansas Military Affairs Departments. That's, and then I got Washburn, then I got Johnson County Community College, and also, and actually, K-State brought on board Caleb from the Kemper Veterans Foundation. So, and I'm open to have nonprofits and that military, but honestly, I wanted to get those, I wanted to get people in military relations from military-connected communities together first, and, and really get the groundwork going. And honestly, it's been getting the mission and the vision and the goals. It's been the, the universities, the Kemper Foundation, and, and our Executive Director of the Governor's Military Council, who really were, who focused, drilled down on, and getting us a piece of paper that it's on. So, so you know, I, I knew it would take a while to get it going, but just having, having people on board from across the state, we're gonna be, we're gonna be back in Manhattan at K-State in February, then we're going to Salina in June, and then we're probably gonna go all the way out to McConnell area. I don't know if it'll be Wichita or Derby, or a couple of, there's some other places out there. And then we'll probably go to Kansas City at the end of the year. So I'm trying, we, we haven't been west very much, and we need to kind of get that way. Pat Gallagher at, who's with the Wichita Chamber, has been really supportive. She's come to one of the meetings, but it's, it's a drive, it's, it's a drive. And that's why I'm trying to keep it quarterly. Maybe we'll do some teleconferencing to help facilitate it, but the group really felt it was important for us to meet and get to know each other, you know, before we start getting, doing stuff online.
Well, I think it's an excellent organization. I think one of the things we really do is we kind of work in our silos, and that kind of brings it all together. So I'm very thankful that you were able to bring it together. And maybe it's the directors of each of those groups that are probably the governance of it. I don't know how that would look.
Yeah.
But I would certainly like to be added to your list serve.
Sure.
For those meetings.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be great for us to see, or have an opportunity to see how, you said, "Well, I didn't know Johnson County had this," or "They had this." That would be great for us to know what's going on around the state as military soldiers and all of that is concerned. Because sometimes we are just affiliated with Fort Riley, but it's a bigger picture than that when you're trying to sell it, when you go to something like AUSA, or when you're going to the National League of Cities, or whatever it is, to understand the big picture. So that was just a request to add me on your list.
Absolutely, yeah. No, that's how, I got the idea, going to conferences, actually, where you go, and, you know, all the people in Texas, and that's a huge state with a lot of military, they all know each other, you know? And, and that's pretty consistent in Florida, California, they're, they're all really big milit, and they all know each other. They, they're familiar. So I thought, "How come I don't know my counterpart in Wichita or Fort Leavenworth?" So that's really where it came from, was trying to get us, and, and we should all be on the same page. We all have a lot of the same issues, and we all want to show everybody how Kansas really is the best place for the military and country, so.
Kind of falls along with like metal, how they kind of came together.
Yep.
So thank you.
Okay, great.
Next question's for Trent. So Trent, you, I don't know, maybe you had this in previous slides, I'm not sure. Is the Animal Health Corridor a new thing? I mean, we've talked a lot about it, but it didn't seem like it was an organized organization. Is this an organization?
Yes. The Animal Health Corridor has been in existence for 10 years.
Okay, I probably just didn't know that.
And it's organized by the Kansas City Area Development Council, and they have full-time staff. And then we are members of the Animal Health Corridor, the Manhattan Chamber is, as well as Kansas State University.
Yeah, I just would reference it as the Animal Health Corridor. I didn't know there was a formal organization.
Yes.
So that's good to know. And you talked about all of this, how employers are looking for flexible space, and, and I, I completely understand that, and I think that's really the way to go for the future. People having lots of options as far as how they want to be employed. How does that work for health benefits? Do you, do you know anything about that? Is that?
Flexible space, or the health benefits for the employees that are flex employees?
For the employees. If they're working like in another state, but they're...
If they're contract employees, then they're not an employee of that corporation, so then they're responsible for their own healthcare.
Okay. Because I was thinking, maybe that was one of the reasons, another reason they might be opting to go that way. I think Donna had mentioned like widgets and things like that. Oh, as far as economic development from John's presentation, as well as yours, one of the main things you're doing that's really impressive is the collaboration with USD 383. The exposure, exposure, exposure. Our kids are being exposed now more than ever to a variety of jobs and professions that they would not otherwise be exposed to. One of the 4th grade classrooms at Ogden has widgets come and visit, and they're, they're talking about a business plan, they're talking about what games would you play, how much would you get in tickets. So they're already thinking math skills, but in a, a business manner. So I think that's powerful, because that's something that sticks with them. You can teach math in a variety of ways with papers and assess them to death, but when you talk about games and business plans, they get that, and that's your workforce. So I'm, I'm thrilled that it's working out as, as wonderful as it is. Let me see, there was one more. How closely do either of you, or even Janet, work with the Alumni Center at K-State? I saw the postcard, as far as returning to Manhattan. Is that like very concrete? Is it like a constant meetings, or is it just happens to be every now and then? Because that's the part that we want to see come back as corporations or businesses go out.
Right. Go ahead if you want. You know, right now, we're engaging Alumni Association as far as talent. We're attracting, you know, bringing people back to Manhattan, into this region. I think it's, it's important to know...
I think it's, it's important to know that we also are engaged with the K-State Career Center, and as students look out for internships and jobs, that we have a larger presence as a community with that, so that those students are aware that these, there are opportunities in Manhattan. So that's a critical piece as well. So both saying, you know, "All right, alumni, you've had a great experience in Manhattan, why don't you come back to Manhattan," but also to the students, they may not stay here right away, but as they advance to their careers, they think of the businesses that are here. So it's really multi-pronged as we engage the university.
Right, okay. And that works for even financially speaking, when you send out those postcards, hopefully they're not just from one, one area, but it's from Kansas State University as well as us. So I like all of the things that we're doing. Were you gonna say something, John? Did I interrupt?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add that the, the mailing goes out through a third-party vendor, we never see the addresses, and we're very sensitive to the fact that we don't wanna go to that well too often. So that was kind of a, a unique situation to do that postcard mailer one time. We're certainly not gonna do that all the time, 'cause we know they don't wanna have their alumni base getting bombarded with mails from us, but they're very, they've been very good to work with, so I really appreciate it.
And I think that's one of the unique partnerships we have.
Yes.
With Kansas State, that instead of being territorial or possessive to some of that, the willingness to share. You know, the, now that we have a new governor that's gonna be in place in January, and legislators that are there, changing the perception of Kansas is going to be key. I was talking to Trent the other night, I think that's one of the key, key things that we need to do, and I'm glad you're working closely with legislators, 'cause we can promote to death everything you're doing here, but if the national perception of the state of Kansas doesn't change, we won't be able to retain and recruit our own students, or get businesses to come here. So I'm, I'm glad all of you are working on that, and I look forward to working with you on that as well as part of the city commission, so thank you.
I think you've presented an outstanding summary of all your work, and it's worthy. We're always impressed with what you do. I was looking at the map of the business park, and it looks like it is getting, getting close to building out. I know there are still some spaces there, but what do you have in mind for a future site for a business park, or can you talk about it?
We won't discuss specific sites.
Okay.
But we will talk about future opportunity, and that, the commission said before, when you build a business park, it usually has about a thirty-year period before it fills up. And when it hits that fifteen-to-twenty-year period, maybe a little bit longer, twenty-five years, that's usually the sweet spot as far as when it starts to fill at, at a higher rate. So we're at that point, and we need to start thinking about what is our next business park? Where's our next industrial park? Because you are looking so far out. I, I have a file of leads that we get that I, we just don't have a lot big enough. So when you, when we get these leads, and they're like, "We wanna put up a warehouse that has fifty employees, but we wanna do, it's a half a million square feet, and we want thirty acres." We can't accommodate that. And so that's one of our weaknesses, as far as the region goes, is having that property available, that shovel-ready, that we can react to those leads.
I just would always want us to have some options when somebody comes asking. And, I mean, these have been kinda slow to fill, but it's kinda like Colbert Hills, it was a twenty-year build-out, and we're maybe at twenty-five, but it's continuing to fill, and likewise with our business park.
Yes.
So over time, it, it does work.
It does.
All right, thank you.
I just have a quick question and comment. The question is either John or Trent, on the talent attraction or retention slide, it talked about identifying gaps. Have, is that a goal that you have moving forward, to do some studies to identify gaps, or have you already identified some gaps in the workforce, and what are some of those areas that we are...
I'll give a quick reaction first. The gap is we don't have enough workforce.
Period, period.
Yeah, period.
But are there certain industries that are struggling more than others?
In fact, the Department of Labor, literally yesterday at the presentation, they have high-demand jobs for this region. We're actually Region Two, and it's like fourteen counties, it's a big, it's not just Riley County, just Manhattan, but it's the usual suspects. It's healthcare, it's manufacturing, you know, it's kinda validating what we kind of already know. And so that, I think that's very helpful. It's good to see raw data that kinda confirms what we see in our day-to-day. So yeah, we kind of see that it's, you know, healthcare, manufacturing, of course, service jobs, things like that.
Okay.
Jared, and just, sorry, Commissioner McKee.
You're fine.
I'll just answer a little bit. One of our challenges, and the challenge for every community, is not only what are our skills gaps today, but as we look forward, what are the gap, what are the skills that we're gonna need in the future? And are we training the people, the talent, to fill those gaps that we can identify that are in the future? And what, what are those skills that we need? And so that's part of the conversation that we're having. Again, we mentioned the metal, we've had other workforce discussions, the state's having some, but identifying today, and then what's coming in the next few years.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've had that conversation before about what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
In terms of recruiting a business or workforce development, and that's a tough balance, so I've learned a lot over the last year, and I appreciate what you all do. My only real comment that I wanted to point out, that advise program that you help run, Janet, I think is incredibly important for that very reason. I was at Civic Plus the day that you all toured, and I can, I can tell you, at a technology company in Manhattan, one of the particular areas that we have trouble recruiting for are engineers, computer engineers, right? With the Army expanding what they're doing in cyber, what they do is exactly what our engineers do, right? And when we can't hire someone in Manhattan to do that job, we turn that position remote, and then that money and that salary goes to a different state. And that happens a lot, and I think that's the other thing that's driving this flexible work economy as well, isn't just the fact that these businesses want flexible spaces. In some regards, they've been forced to do that.
Right.
Because they don't have the talent in their own cities to recruit out of. So that talent acquisition and keeping people here, we go back and forth on chicken and egg, but I almost feel like that's, almost has to be the more prominent part in a way, because I witness it all the time. I, I, I don't have exact numbers, but I think probably, close to fifty percent of the hires, that we would want to be in City Manhattan, we turn remote, because we can't find the employees here, just because of the unique skill set. So I, I think that is a, is a really unique thing that you're doing, and keep it up, 'cause I was really impressed by the group that you had there. It wasn't just a few, it was like more than a dozen, so that's awesome.
Sir, commission comments? Well, ask for any comments from the public. Anyone wish to comment, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
Mayor, could I, could I make one more comment briefly?
Okay.
Okay. I wanna thank you, 'cause you, 'cause you all did something a couple of weeks ago that actually is going to help us market Manhattan, and you may not have realized it, and Trandle backed me up on this, but you made a commitment to purchase wind energy just a few weeks ago. I will tell you that site selectors are now saying that communities that can promote themselves as using green energy, that you just did, Kansas State University did it, and the school district also committed to do it, that is a huge marketing tool, that Fortune 500 companies and their employees want to live in communities that are making that kind of an investment. So thank you all for making that stand. I think it's something the city needs to market on its website, we certainly are gonna market it on our website, and I think you'll find that in the immediate future, it's gonna pay dividends. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Before we entertain a motion, I just want to say on behalf of everyone up here across the city, we'll do this in a more formal way, Lyle, certainly, but this may be your last opportunity to come before the commission and give a report, and I know you've, it's got a limited number of months left, but from all of us, we really appreciate your leadership, your team-building, your ability to relate to so many different people, to hold things confidential until it's time to pass those along to a broader body. And the growth of Manhattan has been significant, and it's in large part due to the kind of work that you've been doing. So from all of us, thanks for all you've done and all your team has done. So... So entertain a motion, please. The reason we're having a motion is because we have contracts here at the end of the year.
Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Economic Development, Fort Riley Promotion, and Tourism and Convention contracts for 2019 with the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Clerk, call the rule, please.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner ready.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Does anyone need a break? Okay, we'll take a break and reconvene at ten minutes to the hour by that clock.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm good.
You need to get out of here.
No, I just need to get this.
Let me, let me exit that before you pull that out.
Yeah. No, I'm done. I already closed mine, I think.
Okay, yeah, I think you're done.
Got it.
Land donation of Scenic Meadows Open Space Tracks. And Wyatt Thompson will present. Thanks Wyatt.
Yeah, good evening. Wyatt Thompson, Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. We're looking at the Scenic Meadows area of the community, which is in the southwest part of town. And a number of months ago, Jim Hollinger with Cedar Hills Development approached the city about donating some open space tracks within that subdivision. Cedar Hills is the original developer of that property. And it started about ten, ten or eleven years ago, one hundred and thirty-three, single-family lots. There are two phases of development that remain, which were on the consent agenda tonight to proceed to design and petitions. And so there's thirty-three homes that will eventually be constructed once those infrastructure projects are complete. The three tracks that, and I should mention that Jim Hollinger is here this evening and I'm sure would be willing to make some comments when I'm done, kind of providing the overview for you and answer questions that you may have of him. Those tracks that they've offered are not able to be developed for housing due to a variety of factors, mostly due to terrain, or drainage, or utility restrictions. And we'll talk about each tract and some of those challenges as we go through. But when they were originally platted and during that planning process, these three tracks were set aside as common areas within the development to be left in their existing state, to be managed by a homeowners association, which to this point has not been formed. So just as some context, this map on the left kind of shows the area of the city. This is Scenic Drive, this is K-18, Miller Parkway cuts through here. This is the VMI tract that we've talked about previously. This is Roger Schultz Community Park. And this is the Scenic Meadows subdivision here accessed off of Scenic Drive. On the map on the right, the tracks that are, that we're discussing tonight are the ones highlighted in this blue color, the track C, track D, and track H, which is this large piece to the north and east side of the development. Again, this is Roger Schultz Community Park and this is the VMI tract here. And I update this map on the left just to give you a little bit better idea of the terrain. There's a large slope here and a much higher ridge line that comes out of Roger Schultz Park. And then the other pieces are kind of in the lower areas of the development. But there's significant elevation change between this point on track H and track C or D. And so I won't walk through every one of these points, all these were in your packet. But generally, track C is kind of in the center of the development. It's a wooded open space. There's a variety of deciduous trees and understory vegetation there. It is a conservation easement, which would restrict, you know, clear-cutting trees of any kind. And there's a bit of street frontage on both Bramblewood and Shadow Ridge Drive, which are the two major east-west streets that come through the development. And then the major factor that, and the reason that this track was set aside as undevelopable is because there are two high-pressure gas mains that Kansas Gas maintains that runs through this site. And those hundred-foot easements that are associated with those gas mains do restrict development for housing. They also restrict development for traditional park-type activities, like a playground structure, or a picnic shelter, or anything that would really, you know, create any kind of excavation. Kansas Gas is very restrictive on what they've said would be allowed in this area. Track D is also a two-acre wooded open space, similar vegetation kind of cover. It's on the eastern side of the development. It is landlocked, and so there's no street frontage. The access to it is from track H. You can't get to it from any of the public roadways. And then it is a drainage easement, and this is actually a typo here. The entire tract is a drainage easement, not just the eastern portion of it. And there are some drainage issues, which Public Works is looking into addressing. They would look to address those drainage issues, whether the city owns this tract or whether it remains in the hands of the developer due to those drainage easement restrictions on the plat. Tract H is the largest tract that's up for consideration tonight. It's thirty-one acres. It's primarily open prairie. There's a bit of deciduous woodland, and then there are some red cedars kind of scattered throughout the property. There are, it's common area and conservation easement again and again. This is the area that's adjacent to both Roger Schultz Park and the VMI tract. There's a bit of street frontage on Shadow Ridge Drive across the street from track C. And the gas mains do pass through this site, but because of the size of the property, they're less restrictive, in our opinion, than the gas easements that are on track C. And there are some other utilities that kind of crisscross the site. But it's a largely open space, very similar to the Roger Schultz Community Park. We do, by plat, do currently have the right to construct trails on this property. There are some notes on the plat that give either the city or the HOA the ability to construct and maintain trails. And so as such, and there's also some pedestrian easements from the development onto track H. And so as such, we did plan trails as part of the Roger Schultz Master Plan to go through this area, to connect the park to this site, to the future VMI site. So that trail planning has already been done and those cost estimates were included with that Roger Schultz Park Master Plan. That's the extent of our rights on the tract though. We couldn't, other than the trail corridor, we don't, we would not have the right currently to manage other vegetation or do other park improvements. We would be restricted to trails as it currently sits. So obviously, as we, you know, we would want to evaluate the recreation opportunities of taking these lands as parklands. They would, they could provide, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty-five acres of contiguous open space if you consider the VMI tract, the tracks that we're considering for donation, and the Roger Schultz Park. We feel that track C has some potential for neighborhood green space, but those utility restrictions are really significant. And so the potential for recreation on track C is more, is most likely a short neighborhood trail connector that would connect Bramblewood to Shadow Ridge Drive. But other park amenities are really limited by that gas easement. Track D has the potential for some trail development as part of that, those Roger Schultz Park trails. There are obviously some access concerns, not having any street frontage or access. And that primarily comes from a forestry aspect. We don't typically actively manage these wildland forests. But if there is a tree that's dead or dying and in danger of falling, or does fall onto private property, we would have, as an owner, we would have responsibility to come in and remove or take care of that hazard. And so accessing this tract for those type of purposes would be pretty limited, but would be difficult to do in the cases where that would occur. And then on track H, this is the track that we feel is the most valuable from a recreation standpoint. And again, because of the size, the number of, the miles of trail that could be added to that, and the contiguous nature with the Schultz Park and the connection to the VMI tract are what make that most, the most appealing of the three to us in our evaluation. So this is a slide that we've shown before relative to VMI, as well as the Stonehaven Park properties. And it's kind of a view of trail connectivity conceptually in this part of town. And so we have Warner Park and the potential for trail connections to the Stonehaven Park site, which will be next on the agenda. Trail connections from there through pedestrian easements to the VMI tract. Trail potential here on the VMI tract, and then through track H to Roger Schultz Park, north to Ledgestone Park, and then through the development, across the bridge, Wildcat, to Annaburg. And so we start to get this, you know, connection of, connectivity of parks, which is a significant asset to the residents who live in this area. We did look at some preliminary costs. The cost to acquire would be limited to the real estate closing costs and survey. The developer is offering the land for free as a donation. There are no specials associated with these tracks. And so there is no cost of specials that the city would assume by taking ownership of this land. Depending on the tracks we would acquire, there could be mowing responsibilities along the right-of-way within the development. So there's about a half acre of mowing that could either be city forces or rolled into our contract mowing agreement, which we'd estimate be around fifteen-hundred to two-thousand dollars a year to have someone go out and mow those areas on a regular frequency. There's some land management aspects, obviously maintaining and developing trail corridors or other developed park areas, controlling the woody species, particularly red cedar removal. We estimate some costs there at twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand dollars an acre. Our forestry crews are capable of managing that. And we are working currently with Kansas Forest Service, as well as U.S. Fish and Wildlife, to manage similar properties and similar vegetation at Roger Schultz Park and Warner Park and some other native kind of areas around this community. So we feel like we can have a good handle on removing that vegetation that would need to be removed. Trail development, a potential of two miles perhaps on these tracks, mostly on track H, which they, we would envision those as hiking-type pathways, not multi-use paved pathways. And so the cost there reflects the lower level of trail development. And then park development beyond trails could be potentially on, you know, something that we'd look at as a master plan with the neighborhood. I think going into that, I really wouldn't envision a lot of park development on any of these sites beyond those trail connectors, simply because of the terrain and the other restrictions that we've seen. But there are questions we could ask the neighborhood to find out if there's other things we haven't thought of, or things they'd like us to look at. We did host a neighborhood meeting back in August on the site, and twenty-five residents participated in that meeting. And we've since had multiple letters have gone out to residents to inform them of park board meetings and this meeting tonight inviting them to participate or provide further comment. There were generally positive comments about publicly accessible neighborhood green spaces and the trail connectivity opportunities that the land donation or the trail opportunities would provide. There were some concerns, mostly from the residents living around track C in the center of the development, about what it would mean if people were walking behind their homes through the trees. You know, would we remove the trees as part of park development? Who and how would maintenance occur? You know, any kind of additional tax burden that would, or cost that would be associated directly with the lots as part of ownership by the city. Of course, we recognize, you know, privacy concerns and would work to make sure that those trails were far enough away or screened in a fashion. And other than cedars, we would not envision removing many of the deciduous trees. And there certainly wouldn't be any benefit district-type costs attached to lots in the development. You know, those costs to develop would be part of the larger city park budget.
Real quick, just a question related to that.
Yes.
You said that you wouldn't foresee removing any of the trees other than the red cedar. It looks like there's probably eight or nine different tree types on there. How prevalent is the red cedar comparatively to the other trees that are on the land?
On track C and D, there aren't a lot of cedar. Those are mostly deciduous.
So you wouldn't foresee a lot of?
We wouldn't, I wouldn't see, I wouldn't see a lot of tree removal on track C or D. It would mostly be, we didn't do an exhaustive tree inventory on those properties. But unless a tree became a hazard in those areas, I don't think we would, we would spend a lot of time there.
Got it.
Track H has more cedars, and I would envision recommending removal of some of those.
Got it, thank you.
And then there were questions about what happens if the city doesn't accept the donation, which the answer to that is that the developer retains, you know, the existing landowner retains that ownership and does whatever they would choose to do with it in the future. But the city would then retain our rights to develop trails on track H. But that would be the limit of our responsibility or involvement with these properties going forward if we don't accept some or all of them. We did present this information, very similar to what I just presented to you to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. They recommended accepting track C, D, and H with two conditions or considerations. They wanted us to work with the neighborhood to establish public access to the land. They didn't want land that we just, that we took on and didn't do something with. And so they wanted to that, that public access. And they were talking about trail development. They weren't talking about roadways or cars through these tracks. They just wanted the ability for people to use the space in a recreational fashion. They also wanted, they also recommended that we negotiate with the landowner to include removal of those red cedars as part of the land donation. They were, I think, had an eye to the cost of that removal procedure and the investment of time that it would take to return some of those areas on track H, particularly back to prairie. And so they wanted the landowner to be a part of that process. Jim has indicated in correspondence with us since the park board met that they're not in favor of that being a part of this process. And he can speak more to that if you have, if you have questions. I do think that the city is in a position to be able to manage that, those red cedars, without the developer being involved in that process going forward. It will certainly take time, as it will at Roger Schultz, but I think we have the capacity to be able to remove what needs to be removed and develop a management plan for that area. So the staff recommendation, after kind of reviewing those, the traits or characteristics of those tracks, is to accept track H because it has the largest recreation potential for that trail development and connectivity. We're not recommending accepting track C and D, the smaller ones, simply because of the utility restrictions, their size, the landlocked nature of track D. If accepted, whatever you all decide to accept tonight, we would work with the neighborhood on a master plan process as necessary to make, ensure that that public access that the park board wanted did occur. And as I spoke to a moment ago, I feel like we can, the staff can address red cedars with existing resources and those partnerships that we're developing with those other outside agencies to remove and plan for that. So these are the four alternatives that are in your memo. Happy to answer questions. And I know that Jim and perhaps other members of the public are available to speak on the item as well.
So any questions or comments?
I have some questions, but I'd like to hear any other comments.
Yeah, please have, is it Jim?
Yeah.
Let's have Jim coming up.
Name is Jim Hollinger. I work for the current owner of Cedar Hills Development. Been with them for thirty-some-odd years. We're trying to wrap up the company. We have limited funds left in it. We've shut everything down as far as possible. We would like to donate this land to the city simply because we can't use it. We're never going to use it. The tax value is less than two-hundred dollars a year. So the value to the city as parkland is worth far more than the taxes that they were going to come in on it. And I anticipate probably within two years Cedar Hills is going to fold as a company. So we're wanting to kind of clean the slate and do the best for the city that we can and also for us at the same time. Any questions you might have?
I was on the planning board before I joined the city commission. And I remember when you were developing the Scenic Meadows area, some of, there was discussion about some of the property owners there along the tract, what is now track H, kind of moving up the hill, putting fences and kind of encroaching on the land. It has, what's the status of that? Has that stopped? Has that gone away? Never happened?
There's no fences going up there. There is one road that cuts across the top corner of track H because somebody bought the land above that and built up a home. And there was an easement granted to allow that landowner access to his house. But as far as encroaching on the land?
Other than that, not, okay. There is a, appears to be a section of the military trail?
Yes.
That cuts through?
Yes.
Is that pretty much intact, or has that been destroyed?
No, over the years, it has pretty well disappeared. There is still an old rock wall up there that you can see and what possibly was part of the trail. But over the years, it's deteriorated. Probably the biggest thing you can see is the rock wall. And it's currently, where the development is right now, there are lots back up to that very edge. And there are going to be nine lots in the next issue that will be on the top of that hill. So the military trail will be between those two sections.
So have you made an effort to protect that trail, or it's just there?
It's just there.
Here, okay.
There is a historical marker in the entry to the vision, but that's pretty well it.
If you were, you're obviously can't or don't want to develop. If there were anything you could do with track H, what would you do?
Can't do anything.
Can't do?
Because of the terrain.
It's too steep.
It's too steep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Jim? Thank you very much, appreciate it. So kind of the discussion, if we can have it, is the discussion? So kind of the discussion, if we can have it, is the discussion of the difference between the park board and what the city staff is recommending. So it's, park board is recommending C, D, and H and the city staff is recommending H only.
Yes, I read over all this and went out there and took a look at it. And, you know, I'm in favor of what the city staff recommends simply because these other two tracks, if we, we can't do anything with them either. And if we did, the neighbors aren't going to like it. I mean, we could put disc golf right, right there in track C, see how people would like that. I don't, I don't think that'll fly at all. So, so, you know, I think that's something that, you know, they don't have a homeowners' association, they had planned to do one, maybe they should. Maybe the the houses that live around there can absorb this property, you know, as as part of theirs and and it'll be taken care of. And my other concern was, I know along track D, there was a couple of people sent me emails concerned about trees they thought were going to, you know, fall on their homes. And what'll happen will be the city is going to end up having to do a lot of work there to to take care of that. And so I don't want us to get into that. I think track H fits with what we want to do as far as connecting the trails. And so I'm all for that.
Wyatt, I do have a question with regard to track H. What are some amenities as a park planner that you would envision for that tract? It's not developable. So what is it that would, besides a trail, connecting to trails? That's thirty some acres just to get trail connections. So I'm asking what else could be done with it?
Well, I, I think terrain wise, if you, you know, there's that ridge line that comes out of Roger Schultz Park and it kind of comes right through here. And so there's potentially opportunity for some sort of overlook here. I think one of the pictures that's later in the presentation is a photo taken from in this general area. And you've got a great view out across the VMI tract and into the Kansas River Valley. So that's some sort of overlook type sitting spot, maybe is something that could happen there. You know, the, the terrain is, the rest of this piece, I mean, this is all sloped pretty severely all through this area. And so there's really not another flat spot where you could do a shelter or or anything. I would not envision any, any roadway connectivity through there. We would have maintenance access off of the future fossil ridge circle. And so for for our purposes, for access, I think, you know, we could, we could get a maintenance vehicle in there.
Where would that be?
That would be in this, this area here.
Okay, where we would have access.
Where we.
Because that's not developed yet.
It's not developed yet. But there would be a plan to extend this roadway.
North.
And build a cul-de-sac here with homes on either side. So we would have access through the end of that cul-de-sac. So I think its greatest value is is trails truly, is hiking paths and and that connectivity.
And the piece that would allow us access to VMI? That VMI tract?
It, there would, it would, it would maintain pedestrian access to VMI. Track H is, comes all the way around.
Yep.
Here, and so this, this piece here is where we have that trail connectivity that connects the three tracks.
Because ultimately, VMI, the VMI tract depends on access.
It does.
So is this going to give us the access we need, I guess?
It, it does not give us vehicular access.
I didn't see it.
It, it main, it continues, it allows, we currently have pedestrian access through track H. Ownership of track H allows for, continues to allow that trail development. It also continues to allow for a broader, more consistent maintenance strategy of those other areas. So the concern would be that eventually this whole, this whole hillside will be, will be treed with cedars. And so our, our opportunity and ownership is to be able to prevent that from happening and allow that trail connectivity through that prairie landscape as opposed to a densely wooded cedar.
Sure.
Hillside.
We aren't planning a zip line or anything, right? To compete with a private business?
I'm not planning a zip line.
Okay, good. I just, thank you. All right. Is there a possibility for a disc golf eighteen hole course?
We are evaluating several tracks for the potential for disc golf. Roger Schultz Park is one of those areas that we're looking at again. And so as, as part of that 225 contiguous acres, yes, there's probably sufficient space, whether the terrain works and you could route a course through there and get to it. Those are all things that would need evaluation.
So it'll settle down as you do these evaluations?
Yes.
Okay. With regard to the military trail, is there any ability to make use of that? I know in Warner Park, thank you for the tour. There's a designation for that military and the scout trail. Is there any possibility that this military trail base or path can be preserved or is it just going to continue to deteriorate, I guess?
So.
You don't, do you have any plans for it?
The, the trail currently runs right behind all of these homes.
Uh huh, right.
And, and this is where, this is where the wall is, is at. And this is where the trail, it's more, what happens to trails like that over time is they basically form a depression.
Sure.
And that depression is very evident. You know, the exact routing of the trail from, from that point, I don't know for sure if it cut through here. It eventually worked its way over to this pink area, which is pedestrian easement as well. So it's, it's very close to people's homes. Portions of it will become part of people's homes as this cul-de-sac is developed. I think there's certainly opportunities for signage. There are some other areas over in this portion of track H that have more of that stone wall. I've reached out to Doug Tippin, who's an expert on the military trail. And so he's, I think, a willing partner in helping us, you know, develop something around this site if it, if it's desirable to do so. He was not familiar with, he was familiar with the walls. He doesn't know for sure if those walls were related to the military trail or related to some other ranch type development that happened on the, on this land, you know, years ago. So those, potentially some research to do. I think we could tell, I think we could tell the story with interpretive signage or other, other means.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So first and foremost, I just want to say.
Back up a minute.
Yeah?
What I'm trying to do is get a, what you would like to see. So are you for the, are you for the, the parks presentation or the staff presentation?
Do you want all three tracks?
I want to take track H.
Okay, good, thank you.
But not C and D.
Yeah, just real quick, first, I just want to say thank you for including the, moving forward, if we took on all three pieces of the land, what the cost would be? That was, I know when we had the VMI discussion, a bit of, at least for me, a pointed contentious, not knowing those numbers. So thank you for including that in this presentation. So yeah, with that being said, echo the other two commissioners' comments. We can't do anything with C and D and I've no interest in taking on land for it to set there and drain from our maintenance fund that we're probably not fully funding to begin with. So H, sounds like there's things that we could do with it and would add value, but I, I, I think that right now we should just go with H and move forward with that rather than C, D, and H. So the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I think, you know, this puts us in an awkward position. I don't know how city staff approaches the Parks and Rec Board. Do you make a recommendation to them like you do us or anything like that? Because I feel, I, I, I feel like being in an uncomfortable position because we kind of had discussed again about the Warner Park master plan, even though they were unanimous in their decision. And in this case, they were also unanimous, I believe, in taking all three. And I don't want to make it seem that their discussion does not matter to us. So I just want to, when we approach discussions like this, how does staff, if you brought this recommendation to us, how are they presented with it? I've read the notes, but I don't know how they were presented with, this is what we would recommend or anything of that sort. Are they given that same information that we are given?
We, we presented the same pros and cons of each site and and the possibilities for trail development and the restrictions that would be on those other tracks. I, I do not believe we had a slide that says in that presentation, staff recommends only track H. In the discussion, we certainly said on several occasions that track H has the most potential for recreation development. But we, we don't typically bring recommendations to them in the same way that we do to, to you all. We ask them for their thoughts or opinions or ideas for how to proceed on certain initiatives. And then we take that into consideration and present that to, to you all for, for decision making.
And I understand how they're looking at it. They're looking at it as it's a donation, we can do something with it. It's not often we would get donations. So I understand that perspective. But at the same time, after going on the tour today with you and seeing all of those lands, they're not vast enough for us to have any kind of an impact. So I do go with the staff recommendation. I support the staff recommendation. I just hope in the future when we have to make these decisions, I don't know how staff would present it to them the way we are, but giving them the pros and cons of both. But I understand what they were thinking with having a donation. That seems like a, a good proposition to have. But when we talk about maintenance costs and the size of the land and all of that, I, I will be supporting the staff recommendation at this time.
Okay, so we've had public comment. If we can have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we accept a land donation from Cedar Hills Development Corporation of track H, scenic meadows, unit five, generally located adjacent to Roger Schultz Community Park on the north and VMI tract on the east and authorize city administration to finalize on the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate transfer agreement.
Second.
Clerk can call roll.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
So we'll proceed to item D, which is Stonehaven, unit two. And I see, looking out here, that this is not Robbott, this is Brian Johnson.
Yes, it is. Got the left-hander out of the bullpen tonight. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. Tonight's item is a land donation development agreement for Stonehaven subdivision. These items define how a future transfer of property could happen. They define the contingencies that must occur before that happens. And they detail the contractual relationship that the developer will enter into for construction of public infrastructure. Tonight's agreement do not have a financial component. If these agreements are approved, petitions and construction of public improvements will come before the commission in the first quarter of 2019. With that, we got a quick PowerPoint. I guess we're done. So this is the master plan. Got this slide here just to show you, when we talk about track A, which would be a future city park, track B, also a future city park, and track C, also a future city park, that's these three tracks here. They're all related to stormwater drainage, water control, and detention. This is the approved plat or the approved lot for Americare, along with these also. So the background on this, I know we've met several times on this, Stonehaven unit two plat was approved in September of 2018, included in the plat were tracks A, B, and C. In October of 2018, the commission directed staff to proceed with a park donation and development agreement for public infrastructure. Staff has completed both a donation agreement and a development agreement. No financial agreements are in these motions. If the commission concurs with these agreements, petitions for public improvements will be brought back in the first quarter of 2019. So the donation agreement, let's talk about that first. Donation agreement details the property transfer from the developer to the city, those three tracks, A, B, and C. Warranty deeds from the developer to the city would ensure that all prior obligations on those properties have been taken care of. That property would come to us free and clear. Naming rights on the park are held by the developer until 2069. We do have a, a right to review those, but those naming rights belong to the developer. So the development agreement for public infrastructure. The agreement details the developer's responsibility for installation of public infrastructure, water, sewer, streets, sidewalks. There's nine separate public infrastructure projects that are included in the agreement. Those nine separate public improvement projects would come before you with petitions in the first quarter of 2019. As part of the development agreement, there's four specific contingencies that the developer must satisfy before a construction project can take place. Those contingencies or all needed permits must be secured. NOI, Kansas Department Health and Environment permit, all of those permits that have to be approved prior to any construction. Petitions must be approved by the commission. Those petitions would come before you in early 2019. You'd get a chance to review them, comment on them. Those would have to be approved prior to any construction. Tracks A, B, and C must be dedicated to the city. So those tracks would have to come to us prior to any construction. Kansas Department of Ag shall certify the dam on track B. The city shall have that certification prior to construction. And all contingencies must be completed prior to December 2019. If those contingencies are not agreed or are not completed by then, we could make this agreement null and void. The donation agreement, again, no, no financial agreements are in these motions. If the commission concurs with these agreements, petitions for public improvements will be brought, brought back before you in early 2019 for discussion. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
You're probably, you said it like three times, so you're probably going to be frustrated that I have a.
That's okay.
Question about it. The, the no financial agreements portion of that, is that because in the public, when the petition comes back, we'll discuss the specials then?
Exactly.
Got it, okay.
Yep, you're spot on.
I don't have any questions about it. I think it's a very solid plan and went and took a look at it today. There's, doesn't, I feel like everything's covered rather well. And we even looked at the potential roundabout area.
Okay.
Potential for lots of growth in that region, too. So I can see why it is deemed, some of the recommendations that were recommended in the agreement.
Yeah, we, we, we worked with legal and thanks to Katie and Bill and their staff, city manager's office, they worked with us and, and we got a pretty solid agreement. We certainly have a lot of contingencies that the developer has to go through first before we would take these, you know, warranty deeds, all of those things.
It seems like the mutual agreement seems, like I said, very solid.
Yeah.
It took, it looks like it took care of all of the challenges or questions we might have for even future commissioners that might be coming on as far as the benefit districts or costs and the agreement itself. And the, the dependability of the developer also coming through with some of those plans.
They have to produce all of that prior to, so it's.
Right.
Everything from here on out is up to the developer for them to, to execute those agreements.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
The developer's here, if you'd like to ask questions of him.
Just have one question. One of the contingencies there is take a look at that dam. What does that look like in your opinion? As an engineer, is there a problem with it or?
So they have applied for a permit through Kansas Department of Ag. They got comments back within the last week, very, very minor comments. They're working through those comments, send those comments back and the plan back to the Kansas Department of Ag. Per the agreement, in theory, they have till December of 2019 to secure that, that permit. Without it, they can't, they can't transfer land, they can't give us any property, they can't begin construction, so.
That doesn't seem to be an issue right now that anybody.
Certainly doesn't. Again, we just got comments back, was it Thursday of last week, Thursday, Friday of last week? So comments were very, very minor, minor.
I too toured this area today and I appreciated that opportunity. It does help, help think things through.
The vastness of the area is impressive, isn't it?
It's a huge area.
Yeah.
And it, you know, this seems very logical. Is there anything that this project is? Is there anything that this project is, has to be accomplished with this? Are we trading anything at all, or this is just a very matter-of-fact and forward development project?
We're not trading anything now. The development agreement lays out how those properties eventually would come to us. If all of those contingencies are satisfied, you know, prior to, then those properties could come to us, and then they could begin construction.
Sure.
So there's a lot of steps have to happen between now and construction time, and, you know, the developer certainly knows that. We've met with him several times.
We'll see this again, I'm sure.
Yep.
The area that's in green, the far end, which is not really so much what we're talking about tonight, but is there any access at all to that VMI tract from there?
So in the preliminary plat from last year...
Yeah, I thought there was.
Several, yeah, yeah. Actually, these two are like a trailhead for parking, and then there's, there's pedestrian access down here. There's no vehicular access.
No vehicular, okay.
Way too steep. Yeah, way, way too steep.
All right. We know it, and we got it, right? Generally, I'm pleased. I think that the pond is an asset.
Yeah.
I ordinarily would be hesitant to...
To take on a pond?
Yeah.
We don't like them either.
To take on a pond.
We don't, you know, we, we are not in the wet pond business, but this is certainly an exception to that rule.
It is. It's spring-fed and...
Crystal clear.
Yeah, it's a gem, I think. By the way, I am supportive of the acceptance of this land.
Neil or Kelly, do you want to make any comments?
Well, I don't really have any, any comments related to the plan. I thought Brian did a good job of laying it out for you. I do want to give you my, my thank yous to the staff. This was a real collaborative agreement to put this together, an effort. They're kind of a unique document that we started from scratch and a little give and take there for everybody to get what they want. That's the way most, most deals are supposed to go. And so I was very thankful for, for Mr. Frost and Jason and Rob and Brian to work it out with us and get to something like this that I think will be real workable for all of us. I do have the, the two donations documents in hand, executed, ready to hand to you with the appropriate time, and, and we have a lot of the work done on the petition. So we're well on the way to completing those four contingencies. Really, the, the real holdup is getting that permit from the Department of Ag for the certification of the Pond Dam, and we expect that very, very soon. So I don't see any hiccups here in it at all. I'll stand for any questions if you have some.
It'll be good to see some of that land on the tax rolls as it all of that area develops. And I just see so much growth happening in that area. So I do agree, this is a solid plan for both sides. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. So open for public comment at this time. Anyone wish to make a public comment on this issue? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and ask for a motion, please.
I move we authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement for public infrastructure that will consist of nine projects for the Stonehaven subdivision and a contract for donation of real estate with BCC Development LLC for Stonehaven Edition, Unit 2, tracks A and B, and a contract for donation of real estate with Manhattan Properties LLC for Stonehaven Edition, Unit 2, track C.
Second to motion.
Clerk, call the roll, please. Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
And Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Well, thank you very much. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.